You are watching Access La Porte County, Channel ninety-seven. Coming up next is the April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three meeting of the La Porte County Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're about to begin. If you have any cell phones, we ask you to turn off the sound. Sorry about that. So we're ready to begin. This is, this evening is the Port County Council regular meeting, April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, just after six, at six oh five. We're gonna call to order, and so will we please have everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Mr. Yagowski, will you take care of it at the end? Please take a moment of silence for Sherri Waters. She's a former council member, former auditor, and a former treasurer of our county, and to pay respects for her. I'm sorry, Officer? At the Indiana State Prison, yes. Thank you very much for reminding me. Mr. Auditor, roll call, please.
Councilman Novak.
Pre- President.
Councilman Keel.
Present.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Present.
Councilman Yagowski.
Present.
Councilman Cunningham. Councilman Mullenauer.
Present.
And Councilman Karanka.
Present.
All seven are present.
Thank you. Need approval of the April twenty-fourth, twenty-three agenda?
Mr. President, I'd make three changes here to the agenda. Delete number one under old business. Move the request from the Highway Department up as a motion of support under new business, and make it number four, and then delete the request from La Porte County Coroner for the requesting permission to transfer funds from Coroner Autopsy Fund to the Coroner Non-Reverting Fund.
So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the agenda's approved. Looking at the approval of the March twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we now open for public comment. So first we'll take from the public in the audience, and then we'll make sure we take a look. If you are on Zoom, please put your hand up, and we'll be able to recognize you that way. Any members of the public? Please come up to the podium. State your name and address.
Good evening. My name's Bill Davis. I live on nine-seven-five-seven West One Hundred North in Michigan City, Indiana. I'd like to bring the attention of the council here. The, what I feel is the degrading infrastructure, the unsafe homes around the county. Within a two-mile radius of my home, I've found numerous structures that are decaying. They're falling in on themselves, burned out. And it wouldn't be so bad if that had just happened, but they've been there for about ten years. No action has been taken. Last year, I went to the Building Department and inquired as to what needs to happen to get these buildings taken care of. Said we'll contact the property owners and have, look into it. That was in January of twenty-twenty-two. Didn't see any action, so in January of twenty-twenty-three, I went back and said, what's with this? Oh, we'll get out there and we'll inspect those. We'll get on that. Okay, nothing happened. So the first of April, I went there again, I said, how do we get the, you know, inspectors, or who do I contact to have these looked into? Well, we don't have any enforcement officer. We don't. We don't even have an ordinance that addresses it. And there's no budget to take care of that. I said, you're kidding me. I get this from the Building Office down in Michigan City. I says, well, I'm gonna look into this, because that can't be. Michigan City has an ordinance. La Porte has an ordinance. So I did some research, and I believe I found an ordinance. It's chapter one fifty-one, Building Code. And it calls for the administration of this top chap- chapter shall be under the responsibility of the Building Commissioner. And says the Building Commissioner shall have the authority to enact action on unsafe buildings. Now I'd like to show you some of what I've found. Buildings that I've reported. And the first one here is burned out in two thousand seventeen. Nothing. The second house, I don't know if you call it a house. It's, it's, it's falling in on itself. It's, it's abandoned, been abandoned since at least two thousand and ten when I moved in. And when I moved in, it was roughly this condition. No action. Several other buildings I've around, within, like I said, within a two-mile radius, they, nobody seems to take any action on these. Now I'd like to find out from you, one, is there really an enforcement officer? Is the Building Commissioner in charge of taking action, sending a notice to the property owners to address these, and, and giving them an order to demolish or repair the structures?
Mr. President, one question, please. So who did, again, you went to Michigan City, you go to La Porte, because upstairs is our, is our-
No, they're no longer here. They're, they're in the-
They're just because you went to-
These are all in the county.
No, 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 no. You, you went, you went to Michigan City because we were closed up.
Because you're closed up.
Okay, okay.
I went here and-
Yep, yep, yep. Who you talk to, because there is an ordinance, there's been an ordinance as long as I've been on here.
I believe her name was Janice.
Okay, last first.
Janet.
Janet. Okay.
Because that, yeah, she absolutely is wrong about that conversation.
Well, someone needs to correct her.
Well, I understand.
Give her a copy of the ordinance. And, and the ordinance has an example, a, a template to use. Order of unsafe building that can be sent. Now, if the Building Commissioner can't do this, who does? Has he delegated that to some unnamed person to do it? Is, is there a budget? It, it says that there is a fund for unsafe buildings has been established within the budget of the Building Commissioners. And so that should, and, and it also calls for fines. If they don't remedy the property, they can be fined, which I presume would go back into the fund. So I don't see any reason why we can't take care of these. It's making my property, I have to drive past these every day. My property value is valued, we have vermin, we can have fire hazards, all kinds of problems with this. It's all laid out in the Indiana Code, what, why this law exists, and it cites that as the reason for that.
Mr. President.
Any explanation as to how come the county doesn't do anything about these?
Mr. President, have you gone to the Commissioners yet?
No, I came to you.
Yeah, it just, we allocate money for this. We have money that we allocate for them. I'm not, we're not trying to bypass it, but the-
Has money been allocated?
We ask, every year, we allocate money.
Where's it going?
Again, could you, you have to go to the Commissioners, I'm just trying to help, I'm educating on this one.
Well, Janice told me to come here, so here I am.
Like, because she also doesn't know where the ordinance is, so I don't accept that. So you have to go from the Commissioners, they work for the Commissioners, and they can allocate, tell them what to do. All we do is we fund that amount of money, and we do that money every year. We don't pick projects, we don't go up and down the streets and do it, they, they do. So I'm just suggesting what they do, but-
I just, I just want to add that Mr. Cunningham and myself have attended several meetings with the Building Commissioner and, and trying to remedy some of these things that we're trying to get to, to make sure that they understand they have the teeth, and if they don't have the teeth, what do we need to do? Because we believe that there's things within the, just as you stated. So that's what we're trying to work through, and I think we're, might be having a meeting coming up here.
Who's the Building Commissioner again?
Mike Polan.
Polan, okay.
P-O-L-A-N.
So, okay, I'll, I'll call him next.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Is your picture back? Want your picture, want your picture back? Is there any other member from the public in the audience? And we'll turn it, if there's any member in the public. I do not see any hands up.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'd like to move that we include the pictures with the minutes of the meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. We're sending them over to the auditor now. Okay, with no one else, we'll close public hearing, public comment. We now open up for department heads.
Good evening, esteemed members of the council. My name is Dion Campbell, and I'm the new Executive Director of the Juvenile Services Center, and I look forward to working with you in the future. You can expect reports from me periodically and updates on everything that's going on. And upcoming, we're going to have a vision casting session, which all of you will receive an invitation to. And our hope is that you can come through and see what we're trying to accomplish to make our county better for our youth. That's really all I have to say tonight. I don't really have a report tonight. But I did want to address an issue that has been lingering for a long time. In November of twenty-twenty-two, I came before this council on behalf of the Juvenile Services Center employees who was promised a fifteen percent raise by this council. That was done in a public meeting, and it was a blanket statement. And later on, we found out that that wasn't true, that only a portion of our members received the fifteen percent, and others received ten percent. So we're looking at about a difference of, of five percent. At that time, I articulated to the council what all of our members do and why they deserve to get that five percent, especially after being told that. And you can imagine how they felt going into twenty-twenty-three with an expectation of getting the fifteen percent raise only to be told that, oops, there was a mistake, and not everyone is going to receive that raise. And here we are approaching May of twenty-twenty-three, and I guess what I'm asking on behalf of our staff is where are, where are we at with this? And is there something actually going to be done about it? And if not, just tell us that it, it's not going to be done. That would sit a little bit better than rolling the ball down and keep pushing it down. And so respectfully, I'm asking where are we at with this and, and what is going to be done? And if nothing could be done about this, then I'd rather just be told, hey, we're not going to give you a raise. The, the employees that only receive ten percent are not going to receive the five percent.
I can say for my part, I spoke recently with Addie Rucker with Wagner Irwin and Cheeley about how we would fit this into our salary classification system. We're not, it's not really clear how that would work yet. So there's going to be more research ahead to figuring out how we would match that with the existing system that we have. But that's my personal progress on it.
Thank, thank you for that. Have there been any meetings concerning this, and what were the results of those meetings? Because we were told that there were going to be meetings. And I wanted to know if there have been any meetings as promised?
There's been some discussion between the three of us, but not a, a real meeting. But I want to make a point clear that this, the reason for this glitch, I'll call it, is because of the classifications, and the JDC is not the only one. We're discussing, we have to discuss it with the Health Department, which we have already a little bit. That was a meeting with them, and we're planning to have another one very shortly with them. And also, the mechanics at the County Highway Garage, I believe, was a part of it, and with classifications, and also the Sheriff's Department Garage. And I think there might have even been, no, I think JDC then was the, the other one, so.
Okay, okay. Were, were they also, respectfully, sir, were they also promised fifteen percent raises, all those departments?
Well, they, everybody got it, and they didn't, just because of the classification. So same thing with JDC, yes.
Okay, um, okay. Can we expect any type of resolve anytime soon? Or just kind of looking, I've got a group of people that, that I'm representing that work hard for this county, that do a job that a lot of people don't want to do and can't do, and I think that they deserve an answer. And if it's no, just tell us no, and if not, just give us some type of resolve, respectfully.
I think our intent is to meet soon the, the committee that was put together for this to further investigate it. I think that's the intent.
Yes.
There's a three-member committee that was put together.
And I, I'll speak for myself. I know I wasn't available for four weeks here recently. And I know Mike, the President, Rosenbaum's on the committee also, and I know he's been tied up with some things, but we've discussed it on, between ourselves, but yes, we will be having a meeting very soon. Matter of fact, I think it was going to be discussed tonight, maybe either during the meeting or right after. That was the thought, anyway.
Okay, so is it, can you give me a timeline when we can expect an answer? And we've been waiting since, we were told this since January, that we would have an answer soon, and here we are in approaching May.
We, we, I, we can't give an answer. And the answer is not that they can just write and say, we're gonna go ahead and do that, because the classification of employees is mandated by the state. And so we're trying to find a way to possibly reclassify employees or add different levels of employees, and that was a call that I also had with Addie. So that's the problem. It's not that nobody wants to move on it. It's like, we don't have an answer as to how.
I, I understand that, Mr. DiMartino, but, but I, we have already been told that we were going to meet soon, meet soon, meet soon, and that hasn't happened. And now, all I'm asking for is, if you can't give us an answer, give us a timeframe when, when you're going to try to get this done.
And I don't think that that's, I, I don't think that that's a good or fair request. I think you can ask the council when they're gonna meet to discuss it.
Respectfully, Mr. DiMartino, go ahead and finish. Go ahead and finish.
Sure.
That's correct.
They can give you an answer as to when they're gonna meet, but I don't think we can give you an answer as to when we have a final answer, unless you guys want an answer, no. We're trying to make this work.
Okay, I, I just need some assurance that there's going to be some movement towards that, because remember, there was a public promise made by this council that the entire JSC was going to get fifteen percent. And so for you to tell me that, that that's an unfair question, I, I wholeheartedly disagree with that.
And reasonable minds can differ. And, and that, and that's fair, but this council did not single out the Juvenile Detention Center, anybody else. They made that commitment, but we have to, we have to work within the law.
Some, I just want to say, some of them, it's not an easy fix. I'm not saying this is the end of April, the timeframe. Maybe it could have been faster. But there's no easy fix for this. It's not as simple as us just writing an ordinance or changing something and making it happen. So the three people are working on that, there's a committee, and-
Okay, thank you.
First of all, Mr. Campbell, before you leave, we want to first welcome you to Juvenile Service Center as a new director. We look forward to working with you too in the future. Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. Ron Heek, Sheriff, Barb Houston, Director, nine-one-one. We apologize for coming to you on this short notice in regards to this, this kind of, I, I'll be honest, this came to my desk Friday afternoon. It involves our Fortigate Firewall Service for the Sheriff's Office and the nine-one-one center. We received bills, and we were told that they are due, I believe it's May fourth, May fifth. So that's why we weren't able to get on the agenda in plenty of time. But what we're here to ask for is a motion of support from you gentlemen tonight. That way we can come back next month to get the appropriation. I received a bill at the Sheriff's Office on Friday for thirty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty cents for a three-year firewall protection for our Fortigate and our Internet service. And that's what I'm coming here tonight to ask you for, is for a motion to support on this bill so we can proceed to get our firewall up and, so we don't lapse with our firewall. Darlene is here from IT, and Roscoe is here also, if you guys have any questions regarding this.
Right here, Mr. Novak, please.
Is this, is this permission to spend?
Mine is permission to spend. I have the money.
Okay.
Okay, real quick, this is, this is actually two new devices for each. I was made aware of it last week. The service, you know, is expiring on both of them. For the, they buy it with, a new device with three years maintenance is actually cheaper than buying just maintenance, which is really odd, but they'll give you some better deals. So Roscoe has been working for a month or two directly with Fortinet to try to get a better deal, but they can't sell directly to us. So we were actually put under a gun when I found out about it and, and Roscoe that, you know, we have to get this equipment on order so that they don't run out of service.
So, okay, Mr. Yagowski, then I'll-
Okay.
I, I just want to make sure I understand, is it thirty-five thousand for you and thirty-five thousand for you?
Same exact.
Same exact thing, three-year contracts, you have the money
I do.
in your budget, so is there even need for us? I'm, I'm gonna ask the attorney, is there any need for us?
He doesn't have the money.
I'm talking about-
Oh, for her?
For nine-one-one, so they can just do it through their normal process.
She'd ask him for permission to spend, though. She'd just ask him for-
So this is in your, out of your user fees, user fee account?
Yes.
That would be appropriate, an appropriate spend out of a user fee.
Yeah.
Motion to approve for nine-one-one center to take it out of their user fees.
So we, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Any further conversation or comments, questions? Hearing none? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to support, of support for the Sheriff's Department to spend thirty-five thousand-
Two hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty cents.
I take seat thirty, second.
So we have a motion and a second?
Discussion question.
Discussion, please.
So first thing, so why didn't we have this in the budget for last year, for this year?
It's a good question. I, go ahead, Roscoe, yeah.
Mr. Yagowski, Roscoe Hoffman, so this was something that we just got on Friday, the quote, we were waiting for the quote.
What was our server last, last year? What was our server last year?
You, you said our server?
Who provided this service last year?
So this was, it's, what happened is our Fortigate, the, the maintenance is not just the maintenance, but it's also, we've, we just found out that also the Fortigate itself, their, Fortinet is not going to provide service to that device. They said we have to get a new Fortigate.
Okay, so it's not in their budget every year, because it comes with three-year maintenance. So I imagine that it-
That thirty-five was for three years.
Yes, for the new device and three years of maintenance.
Well, three years ago, previously, Fortinet, or whatever the name was, supplied-
Fortinet, yes, they, well, I believe last year we did this for one year, though, because we, we didn't need a new device. So you can continue, but once that device, they will no longer-
End of life.
Continue, yeah, that end of life for that device, they let you know, hey, look, it's end of life, you need a new device, and that was something we were just notified.
It's a three-year agreement or a four-year new equipment? Is that what you're saying?
So-
I'm shaking her head, okay. It's three-year contract or four-year new agreement?
Well, no, it's three years.
No, we did it, no, we just did a year last year, that, that's not, we-
Last year it was for one year.
One year. I gotta do it one more time. So it's a three-year agreement or a four-year with a new purchase?
To, we're assuming in four years, you're gonna come back for the same thing.
Three.
Three years or four?
Three years, three years.
Three years. So what happened last year was-
Then we can extend it one more year after three years.
As long as they're still supporting this device. They will, at least for three years, as long as it hasn't end of life after three years.
It's not guaranteed.
I, well, you know, we'll try to figure out the-
So yes, three years, and then if possible, they will come back for one year additional maintenance in three years.
Would this, to say you don't have the funds, would this be a fund that you could, we could take out of, like, uh-
Commissary fund, twelve thousand dollars a year for the next three years?
Well, I don't know if they'd be willing to allow us to pay us in, in yearly installments.
I understand, right? You've got thirty-six thousand in commissary right now.
I do, correct.
Paid that, and then you didn't pay the twelve, the second and third year, you'd basically be dividing it out over three years, correct?
Correct.
I don't have a problem paying, just, and I understand it's a complicated mess, why anybody would do that, but I just thought maybe we could take out of, out of that fund, and then, and then, of course, we won't have to worry about it for the next couple of years, maybe even the third following year.
Correct, yeah.
Does that sound feasible to you, Sheriff?
Feasible to use commissary funds versus getting an additional appropriation? Yeah, I mean, I, we can do that, that, it's not a problem.
Mr. Mullenauer, would you, would you change your motion?
And then if there's something later, just as with Barb, if, if, if she runs short in that fund and there's something she needs to do, she knows she's gonna come back for it, so, I mean, it's not-
So there, there was a question by Mr. Yagowski to you, Mr. Mullenauer.
Yeah, I heard.
And I didn't know if you wanted to respond.
I don't agree, I don't agree with it, but if the sheriff says he can do it, why? But I just don't agree with that. I think it should be appropriated.
If, if that's what we've got to do to make sure this is up in, our firewall is up and running properly.
Your desire is not to change your motion?
True.
Okay, so we still have a motion on the floor?
We don't have a second, I don't think.
We do have a second.
Do we?
Who was the second?
The second was Adam immediately. I mean, it was like same product. So I don't have a change of motion, so I'm gonna call for a vote. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays?
Nay.
Okay, you got the count, or do we need to do a roll call? I have a five-two count.
I don't have a count. Do you want a roll call?
I'm good with five-two.
Five-two, okay. It's up to the council to call the roll or not, ask for a roll call or not.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Okay, all right, we do have a member, like, a roll call, so let's do a roll.
He doesn't have a count, he doesn't know who voted against it, even.
Well, we could have told him.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilman- Novak.
Aye.
Councilman Cunningham.
Nay.
Councilman Mullenauer.
Aye.
Councilman Yagowski.
Nay.
Councilman Keel.
Aye.
And Councilman Karanka.
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays.
Thank you. Would any other department heads? Excellent.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Evening.
This is my first time here this year. Did you miss me?
Yes.
Some more than others, I guess. Okay, I wanted to bring to you this evening some numbers on what our statistics have been compared to last year on deaths. Right now, our deaths stand at a total of eighty-nine for the year. Last year at this time, eighty-three, so we're up a little bit. Good news is overdoses have only been eight, last year at this time, twelve. Suicides, two, same as last year. Motor vehicle accidents, one, and one, I'm sorry, three last year. We are seeing some new trends in drugs, though. Parafluorofentanyl, as opposed to just straight fentanyl, which is a synthetic opiate, that is ten thousand, ten thousand more, ten thousand times stronger than just fentanyl. We are seeing that come into some of our cases, and now the labs are also finding across the states that Xylazine has come into the picture, which is an animal tranquilizer. They've actually been mandated by the state, all the labs, to automatically put that in a regular comprehensive test, because we're seeing so much of it. So far, in La Porte County, we've not seen it, hoping that we don't. Some other things going on at the State House. The governor is signing a new bill that provides when someone dies in another county, if an autopsy is to be done, the coroner in which the county, the person resided in, has the option to, or has to be asked now if they want an autopsy, which would save at least for our- If they want an autopsy, which would save at least for our county quite a bit of money, last year I paid. I believe close to eighteen thousand dollars to Saint Joe County because as a trauma center, a lot of people go there. Are transferred by EMS. In a homicide situation, obviously an autopsy has to be done, motor vehicle accident, autopsy has to be done. Um, but at least now they have to ask us, they can't just autopsy everybody that comes through. You know, so that hopefully will save us a little money. The other thing, um, at the State House for the governor is. He's removing the requirement for the county to fix compensation of a coroner who is a licensed physician. I believe all of you know that if a coroner is elected. I mean, if a physician is elected as coroner, their salary is one and a half times what the normal coroner salary is. But they're really not doing anything more than what the coroner does. They still have to go through classes, they still have to be certified, they can't do the autopsy, that still has to be, you know, put out to a pathologist. So, um, a lot of coroners are very, very happy about that because for many years. Um, some very qualified people were getting slighted, you know, when they weren't getting the same. Pay as what a physician would pay. Um, also in my office, we've got two new deputies, um, one on the road right now, Erica Albright. She's finished her classes, passed all of her tests, so she's out on her own now and uh, we just brought on Heather at um. McMillan. She's just starting, she's in her second week in training and she will be going to school to get certified as well. Which would bring my total up to seven. Still three short, but finding people to do this job is not very easy, nobody wants to do this. But that's all I have for the last three months.
How many overdoses did you say there were? Did you men, did you break that out of there?
Mm-hmm, for this year so far?
Eight?
Eight so far this year, there were twelve last year.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other department heads? You're just toying with them.
Good evening, Rob Sabey with the Emergency Management, I just want to give a report on uh, what our department's been um, up to here for the past. Month or so, um, we've got our mitigation plan that we've been working on for several months, it's actually come up to. It'll be up at the next Commissioner's meeting for approval. Um, and then that goes downstate and then once the state approves, it goes to FEMA and gets approved by FEMA, then. Our county will be back into compliance with uh, with our mitigation plan. Um, and then. Um, piggybacking off of that, all the communities that uh, are involved in that will have to. Also adopt the um, the plan. That way they will all be eligible for if there's any, you know, like we had the storms come up in the last month, um, if there's any tornado damage or something and it's a. FEMA declared disaster, then they'll be eligible for any kind of funds that are available through that. Then next, we're gonna be working on our county mitigation plan, which is basically more detailed. When we get that all together, we will send out um, copies to everybody so they can uh, go through them and then we'll get that approved. Speaking of the storm, we, we actually did two, three days on damage assessment, um, we had a few homes that had trees that were fa, that had fallen on them. Actually, my next door neighbor had a tree and knocked off his uh, back porch off his house. Um, the storm actually started just west of Union Mills is where the damage was, and then it kinda went. To the northeast and um, I think it was nine fifty east and seventy-five south is where the last reported damage we had. Um, there were some barns that had, had roofs and second floors blown off, um. Lot of trees down, I know I was working with the um, county. Um, street department, they had, they said it was not too much more than normal um, storm damage, they had probably about forty trees they had to remove from roadways. So we were working on that, actually Indiana, it was declared that um, this is the fourth largest tornado outbreak in. Indiana history on the thirty-first of, of um, March, so we lucked out. We didn't get that much damage, we did have some, but not a lot, so I know uh, Lake County had some in Maryville. Um, they had quite a few homes that were, had significant damage. And they were actually declared, you know, a disaster through FEMA, so. We also were out, we, we assisted with uh, three different fires. Um, we had a structured fire in Pleasant Township that we went out and helped, we brought out water for the firefighters and stuff, um. And then we had um, a woods and field fire, two of them. Um, we brought out our cooling trailer and uh, so that firefighters could get in and get um, cooled off and. Uh, rehab and we brought water out to that also. Um, and then we're also working on a um, a mock disaster, it's a countywide one. And um, we've already had a couple of planning meetings, um, our tabletop is going to be June fifteenth. And then uh, full-scale exercise is gonna be on the eighteenth of October, uh, we kinda wanted to get away from the summer. With all the events and everything that's going on, it's kinda hard to get to all the first responders together when they're all busy doing. You know, the vents on the weekend and that kinda thing, so, um, and that, the theme is gonna be a, a train derailment. At, at our last. EMA board meeting, um, it was brought up that, that was one of the things that uh, wanted to do is try to get a mock disaster, we haven't had one in a while. And uh, and actually that's, part of that we have to do is to be compliant, so. Anyway, it was brought to be, do a train derailment and then two days later, we had the train derailment in Ohio that. Um, kinda brought it to the forefront, so. Um, that's kinda the, the theme we're gonna do is a, a train derailment and uh, and we're gonna test all the. You know, emergency services and along with our auditor and stuff and uh, county commission. Um, you know, we all have to work together if there's a major disaster and. It just, it's just not about a train derailment, it, it could be a tornado, whatever the dis, disaster might be, but basically it all, it's all the same working. So we all have to work together, you know, if there's uh. Say we have to bring in a bunch of sand or we have to do a bunch of debris, debris removal or something like that, we have to keep track of all that, it all has to be documented, that way. You know, if we turn it into FEMA, um, if it gets to that point, then that all goes towards our, our uh, twenty-five percent that we have to cover, so. You know, all, all disasters start local and end local, so. So that's all I have right now, I mean, we've been busy, so. Think any questions or?
Thank you for the report, will you be around later at the end of the meeting report when we're discussing the sirens?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks, Brad.
Heather Stevens, clerk, um, I just wanted to come in and touch very quickly on uh. I came to you guys last month and we discussed the pay increase for all of the election workers. So I did exactly as you suggested, I went back to the election board, that pay increase was unanimous across the board. So I'm really excited about that and it's definitely helped with bringing in the poll workers, it also helps that, like I said last month, we are. We have greatly reduced the amount of staff that we need out at the polls, Cummings Lodge, um, traditionally. I believe has five precincts, which is twenty-five election workers, this year we have five. So this is, this is gonna be a really big savings, um, the other thing I wanted to touch on was Councilman Karanka, thank you. We have had some issues, um, with, with some tax questions. I don't understand tax anything, so I contacted our liaison who has been phenomenal. Um, having said that, and I, I know we do not discuss employee issues, this is, this is an official issue, Mr. Stabos. The emails that you are sending to the staff are highly inappropriate, I had a young lady in tears. And I'm going to ask that, 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 just calm down, just calm down, and the words toward Mr. Karanka weren't, weren't exactly nice. So just calm down, let, I, I know you're working on it, you've been in touch with Mr. Stabos, I don't know. I think we don't know if this is HR, if it's coming from the auditor's office, but there, there's something that's not right. And that's, that's all that this is about, we just wanna find out what it is, so, but thank you.
Just add to that, um. A lot of the issues, it just comes down to confusion, understanding of tax law and filings of W fours and, and ensuring that. Employees are getting the assistance that they need in order to properly understand what their withholdings should be versus what they have been. And just making sure that they get filed properly with payroll, whether that's through the HR uh, initial onboarding. Or uh, an addition or an amendment later on, and it was just uh, to facilitate some communication. Thank you for your assistance, Mr. Stabos.
Um, I'm gonna make a comment first, and, and this is not any particular, it's a general, it's a general comment, it's about payroll tax withholding. And I believe that we should create a policy that on an annual basis, usually at the same time. That we do uh, re-sign up for our insurance, that we also. Uh, request everybody, take a look at their withholding and to see if there's any changes that need to be made. Um, one of the things that people um, were not aware of is that uh, the federal government changed the withholding tables. So they weren't giving out as big of refunds and also because since COVID, they're not getting this extra cash. So therefore, these extra, you know, free funds, so all of a sudden now we're coming off of it and weaning off of it. What's happened is there's been overall, and this is from my profession, I can tell you overall, when we went to go prepare tax returns this year. People are all like, what happened here, and so, and I'm imagining that this is what is going on here. But uh, again, um, we, we have to, if we find out a problem now, then you don't wait. You immediately um, go and have the withholding changed, and if you need to, you may need to make an estimated payment. Sometime during the year for the first quarter if it hasn't been changed yet, so this is something that I personally have had to do. Um, with, because of my employer, of something that happened with my withholding, and so I can talk about that. And if anybody else was in the same boat I was, um, it, it can happen, and especially if there's a part-time person. Typically, um, they don't meet the threshold to have any taxes withheld, and if there's a second wage earner in their family. That could be disastrous because you're now going from zero to now in another tax level, so if you wanna come back up, please do.
So one, one of the things that we're noticing is that we have full-time employees having zero federal taxes withheld. And that's where, that's where it doesn't make any sense to me, because we're, we have to pay in, and we're working, we have to pay in.
Without, without going into further detail and, and having you explain a little further, because I really don't want to. Part of it is, there's a, there's other, part of it on the W four is, um, whether or not, and you should always use, avoid using the word exempt. And the other part is, is some people think just because they have six members in their family that are all dependents. But if there's a second wage earner, they should be possibly being zero, while the major wage earner or, or one of them. Should not be, they both should not be doing that, but unfortunately. Um, I don't know where you're ever gonna find the best advice from an HR or from payroll in any company. To explain it that way to you, so a lot of times, um, you may not get that, but the idea is that we have to. Uh, realize that if you're seeing something and that you need to check your paycheck, and if you see zero. Then you've gotta go and say, hey, I need, you know, ten percent withheld, or I need fifty dollars withheld, something. And so that's why I turn around and I say. Uh, you know, with, with almost eight hundred employees or whatever the real number is. You're gonna have to take, could take a little bit of control, not blaming anybody, just that, that's gonna be the recommendation. Especially if you see that and prevent it from happening, because once that, once that W four is in, it will continue the rest of the year.
And this is all stuff that's changed within the last couple of years?
Yes.
Okay, so because from, from my point, what I have are, are some staff members, and it's quite a few. Who are confused, um, very confused, they, they owe money. This year, and, and so we, you know, as taking a look at it, and that's why, that's exactly why I contacted Mr. Karanka because. This is, this is, no, I, I don't do taxes, I'm no accountant.
So, uh, you know, uh, we only got a chance to discuss it after a lot of the, the workings were done, uh, but. I would've been in the same situation, I maybe could've shortened it just a little bit, and that's it, so.
Okay.
Now that we, now that we've tried to explain a little bit more to the rest of the county employees that may be listening into the meeting. Maybe they now will take the opportunity to take a look at their pay stub a little bit closer and then multiply that out. And then take a look and whether or not where they were last year to next year, whatever the case may be. Unfortunately, um, this, the playing with the withholding tables is, is. You know, we have to use the statutory numbers unless we're told differently, and they're now, they're now yielded where you're not gonna be break even. It's now yielded to the point where you may owe a few dollars.
Okay.
So.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to speak. Good evening, I do not appreciate my integrity and the integrity of my office being dismerched by the county clerk.
Please state your name.
Fort County Auditor, Tim Stabos.
Thank you.
We have gone out of our way in my office, we are not people's tax advisors, we help as much as we possibly can. Um, but when I ask individuals questions about their situation, try to gauge what the problem might be, which is actually going above the, above and beyond the auditor's job. And I meant with hostility, why are you asking me if my husband works or not or stuff like that? Um, it, it's, it's very off-putting, uh, we, I, I wanna thank my, my chief tax. My, my chief tax deputy for actually going through an entire IRS table of two employees and, and testing and it's still verified. That they should, that they have nothing being withheld, those employees should've done that themselves, they should've talked to their own tax advisors, we're more than happy to help. But when we verify that this is the way the system is, and we're still met with hostility and judgment that we screwed up something because they're angry, because yeah, they owe a few thousand dollars. Where are the IRS, we're sorry about that, but that's not our responsibility. And I've spoken to Clerk Stevens about this, and she still deems to come up here and besmirch the integrity of my office, and we've gone above and beyond our duty. So what I, what we could, only thing that we can advise your tax advisor is your, or tax CPA. Is that what we've told people is we can't tell you how to fill out your W four, we can't tell you, we can't advise you, but what we can observe for you. That if you want the most amount withheld, claim zero exemptions and claim that you're single even if you're not. That way it will take out the most, if that's what you want to do, but we can't tell you what to do. So there's only so much we can do, that's all I can say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department heads?
Hi, Kristen's Viable Voter Registration. All I'm asking for is consistency, and if nothing is supposed to be withheld because of the way I filled out a form. Then I wanna know why in twenty twenty-one they withheld money. And when I asked that question, I was told that I cannot answer that.
I'm gonna stop you here, because now. I'm gonna stop you here because now it's a little bit more personal, I'd be happy to walk, uh, uh, talk with you about it separately because of my background. But I don't wanna carry this conversation on, and again, because to protect your privacy on it as well, okay?
And I don't appreciate emails being talked to a lot.
Well, I understand, I understand, and I thank you, is there something that you'd like to report about your department or was this it?
Yeah, it's my whole department's going through it.
Okay, okay, well, thank you very much and I'll be more than happy to have a conversation. Any other departments? Uh, we call on Sean Fagan on the uh.
Thank you, Mr. President, I don't know if I've introduced myself formally to this new body in a public meeting. But I just wanted to say hello, introduce myself, um, you know, my name is Sean Fagan, I'm the uh, the new. La Porte County Prosecutor, just, uh, I'm not here to besmirch anybody or to say any good things. I'm just here to introduce myself at a public meeting, uh, because uh, uh, many of you know me. Individually, we, we've communicated through correspondence via email or through the phone or in telephone calls and texts. But uh, I just wanted to introduce myself to you formally, uh, I apologize that I couldn't be there in person, I had a meeting in Michigan City today. But I just wanted to say hello and look forward to talking to you over the next couple of months and next couple of years, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department heads? Kate, we close department heads, we now go to liaison reports, I'm gonna start this time on the left because I started on the right the last time.
Okay, uh, on April twelfth, I attended three separate meetings that day with the, the first being with the Sheriff's American Commission Board Meeting. Uh, the second with the Job Evaluation Committee Meeting, and the third with the Solid Waste District Joint Board Meeting. Uh, the only other thing I have is on the thirteenth, as many of you. The only other thing I have is on the thirteenth, as many of you did, I attended and participated. As, like I say, as many of you did, to present the ten thousand dollars to our sixteen volunteer fire departments. That's all I have, thank you.
Similar to what Councilman Monahers mentioned, the, uh, the voluntary fire department disbursement on the April thirteenth. Also had a, an event after our, day after our last meeting for Purdue Extension Office. Just a time to meet their team and, and a good evening overall. On the twentieth, actually, sat and spoke with the entire building maintenance and facilities team for lunch with just an open forum and discussion. Get to know the individuals as well as talk about current projects going on, along with potential projects coming forward, and some of the challenges that they're having throughout the, the county in, in terms of, uh, building and grounds maintenance. And then lastly, met with Chris Havens and Paul Vicary, the new ecologist at, uh, Laporte Soil and Water Conservation District. One thing that came out of that was just a number of the programs that they, they provide throughout the summer based on grants. And one thing that they wanted to highlight was, if you go out to their website, laportswcd.org/shop, you'll find kind of a fundraising and public service page where you have the ability to purchase native flowers and seeds for landscaping, and it provides, is providing a service for not only the environment, but also some funds to the county.
Would you like to repeat where they can find that information?
That would be the website, laport, L A P O R T E S W C D dot org slash shop.
Thank you.
The, give an update on FMEC, the, the bathroom had project has started, the council funded this last month. They're hoping, the plumbing's going in, the foundation's in, they're hoping to pour concrete by the end of next week, trying to get everything done prior to the fair. In the same line with FMEC, we're gonna do a joint, the fireworks for Laporte City are gonna be held at the fairgrounds this year. It's a joint venture with the city of Laporte and FMEC, and that'll be on July fourth. If the upgrades in the nine-one-one center, I was pointing to Houston, but she was sitting back there. Upgrades in the nine-one-one center are fantastic. The nine-one-one center is not open to the public, but if anybody wants to see some pictures, it is absolutely incredible, and the upgrades that were done in there, fantastic, desperately needed. Animal control's on the agenda tonight for some funding to help with the transmission on one of their trucks. Attended the RDC meeting, they're on the agenda here later tonight. The weekly meetings that I attend regarding the complex flood, attended meeting, the fire department is Adam and I think there were several of us there, for the volunteer fire departments. Westville School, attended a meeting there, I think South County Coalition had a meeting over there regarding the new DOC facility that's going to be built there in Westville, to take place of the old Baty's. The Purdue Extension, there's, things are really going very well out at Purdue Extension now. So I'm, I'm happy to report that, so I think that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Keel.
The big focus this month has been getting to understand our fund balance situation. I probably spent over fifty hours on this between meetings, visits to the auditor's office, and frequent calls to Rhonda, who's probably sick of me at this point. There are a lot of layers to this, but I think we do have a better idea about where the county's financial position is after all these conversations. That being said, there's still plenty more to look into, but I'm happy to chat with anyone who has questions about that. I checked in with my liaison assignments, probably most notably here, the treasurer's office is now collecting property tax payments. The first installment is due by May tenth, no exciting news. I attended meetings for four different local government units this month, including the NERPC Full Commission Meeting last Thursday. You should know that the draft of NERPC's federally mandated NWI twenty fifty plus plan is now out for public comment through May fifth. The five hundred and twenty-page draft document is the culmination of sixteen months of work involving numerous stakeholders and provides a considerable amount of detail about the future of Northwest Indiana. And finally, I wanted to take a second to remind department heads and other elected or appointed officials about something near and dear to my heart in my day job as a journalist, and that's the open door law. Part of what keeps government accountable is that we conduct our business out in the open. And so I wanna give a friendly reminder, if you're on a committee created by statute or appointed by another governing body or its presiding officer, you're subject to the open door law. This means that your committee needs to post notice of meetings, notify media outlets that have requested notice, keep minutes, and follow all the other provisions of IC five fourteen one point five. I know some of that might sound daunting, and if it does, feel free to reach out to me or the attorneys, and we're happy to point you in the right direction. So that's all I got, thank you.
Mr. Yagelsky. Mr. Cunningham. And it's, I guess it's my turn. We do have a meeting at the RDC this Wednesday coming up, haven't attended the last one. There's, actually, I think I missed the last one, sorry about that one. I couldn't even zoom in, I was, I had to be someplace else, and I was in a different state. So I was at the Purdue Extension. Next meeting, Sewer and Waters, in conversation with them, they'd like to come here for a workshop to share with us what is going on with their projects, and then they obviously also wanna ask for money. Common theory theme that goes on with this, but at least let's find out what's, uh, what's happening with all of the new water and sewer or sewer lines that are going out there. That would be at five fifteen before our next meeting, we'll, we'll advertise it as well. The FMEC, the one thing that was left out, that we now have some light fixtures up, and there are solar lights that are now up by the entrances so that this way it's not dark all the time, and also at a couple of key locations inside. Not, not heavy, you know, booming lights that you're gonna see up in the, off of a space shuttle, but enough to, to be able to feel more comfortable driving in and out, or walking in and out. I too have seen the E nine-one-one center with a couple of other members, and it is a state of the art. It's just a proud, it's proud to say that we have it, and that the money was, was well spent, and, uh, you know, I can't say more than that. I was also at the meeting regarding the state facility in Westville, and also have been partaking in the discussion about fund balances as well that we were kind of charged to by some of our fellow members. And I was happy that we were able to come to conversations with even a, a former member of the auditor's office to help out in the final meeting. Okay, with that being said, any correspondence?
There is none, sir.
Okay, ordinances and resolutions, I'm actually gonna ask for economic development, which is Mr. Paul Vincent. If you'd like to share any comments about the declaratory resolution we're gonna speak about, and then.
Good evening, esteemed council members, Paul Vincent, Director of the Center for Economic Development Planning and Governmental Affairs. We're on the agenda this evening for what amounts to the first of many steps related to a tax abatement for Van Air. They've recently put together an application for us that should have been within your, your, your board packet, outlining some improvements that they're planning on making later this year. With the building and the manufacturing equipment, it totals approximately eight point three million dollars worth of improvements. I've worked with our county auditor as well as our attorney here, and they've advised me that the, the appropriate steps here are to go back through and, and set up an economic revitalization area. You may recall that many years ago, when Van Air moved their corporate headquarters to Indiana, it was fifteen-plus years ago, they went through a very similar process. And we had an economic revitalization area in place for their improvements then. These improvements are gonna require that we go back through that process again, so today is much of a formality where we have the declaratory resolution, and we also wanna approve a public hearing that will advertise that'll occur at your second meeting next month, to allow the public to come out, and I anticipate having, having Van Air present at that meeting just to help answer any questions they may have. That's a quick synopsis, was that any questions?
Any questions or?
I'd like to make a motion to read by title only.
We have a motion to read by title only, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Okay, by title only.
This is Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash four, declaratory resolution of the Laporte County Council, declaring a portion of Laporte County, Indiana, an economic revitalization revitalization area pursuant to Indiana Code six dash one point one dash twelve point one dash one.
Thank you.
Motion to approve. And I'd also like to be added as a co-sponsor onto this, sir.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Question, please.
Please, go ahead.
Question back to, I know I was working with Matt too. Did they, did we get the, the fee that was supposed, that's supposed to be collected at the time of this, of the time of the decoration? Was to apply for a fee? Yes, sir. I'm talking loud.
State your name, sir, state your name, please.
Matt Ridden, Laporte County Redevelopment. Paul and I were working together on, they'll, they'll submit the two hundred and fifty dollar fee. And then, as part of the abatement, and you'll see the information in the spreadsheets that Paul will have for the next meeting that shows the savings and whatnot, the company would also make that contribution to the office, to Paul's office for future economic development activities.
That'd be great, it's just, usually at this time, they have a statement, but okay, thank you.
Yeah, we have all the original information, I'll drop off to Mr. Stamos's office, but he has a copy of everything.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Can everybody, they say they can't hear, can everybody hear on this microphone, or we have some dead mics?
It was better when you were a little closer, you know, but that was strange.
Geez, usually you don't have to get that close.
I know. Okay.
Motion to second, sir.
It's called vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, we, we had comment, any other comment? Okay, with no other comment, all those in favor, please say aye.
We just get a motion, it's just a public hearing next meeting.
So I need a motion for, to create a public hearing for our next meeting?
I'd like to make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any comment? All those in favor, say aye. Thank you. We move on to old business, and we only have one item under there, which is the public defender's health insurance. And I would like the, our attorney to please explain.
So we've been, uh, we had a lot of questions with this, remember the budget hearings and Mr. Bresji came and you all approved his budget, and he had a line item, and it wasn't a line item, it was just an addition to the budget for health insurance, and then there was the discussion about the public defenders going on health insurance, and then, then there were some concerns that their vendors, they're ten ninety-nine, we don't typically do that for independent contractors. I looked at the matter, you know, and it's much cleaner, and I discussed it with Mr. Bresji that he would just add eight hundred dollars a month to each contract, because that's what he allotted in the budget. And so that would be my recommendation to the, to the council. I've heard people say, well, Porter County does it this way, well, other counties do it this way. If, if they want the public defenders on, on the county health insurance, then they need to come with a plan. And we'll, we'll review the plan, show us what Porter County's doing, but right now, we just don't have precedent. So that's my recommendation to, to the council. I know that it'll be a change of circumstances for the folks that have, you know, applied for the plan, so we need to give them a little time. But, you know, you all need to either let it go the way it is, or just authorize that he can enter new contracts with them for eight hundred dollars more a month to help offset their cost of health insurance.
I know, I know, I know what you're saying, Mr. DiMartino, but, you know, it's not like we've been doing this for fifteen years, they just all of a sudden wanted to get on, they wanted some people to get on the insurance, so I agree with you a hundred percent, it's a clean way of doing it. But this, this is not, it's not like we surprised anybody, they sort of surprised us in some respect.
Yeah, no, no, and I never insinuated that you all surprised anybody.
Would, would that be a motion, Mr. President, as, because it enlisted, you know, would it be a motion that we could do it tonight or by asking?
I, I believe that we can do a motion tonight, because we're, it's, we've already done, it's already funded, so all we're gonna do is change or create the plan that they can get reimbursed for up to eight hundred dollars per month. Reimbursed, I'm sorry, they get paid eight hundred dollars.
Mr. Bresji's gonna have to amend their contracts for, for that. But the other thing you're gonna have to consider is, what's a reasonable time for the folks that are on the plan to procure additional insurance, you know, whether you wanna make it June, you know what I mean? That way, you give that was.
Under the impression they already knew that, that that was being discontinued.
Well, no, they knew, they knew that that was gonna be my recommendation to you all, but this is the first step, we've done it, and, you know.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that Mr. Bresji redo a contract with the sixty-day provision for insurance, because a fair amount of time for, for them to either get their own insurance, whatever they wanna do.
Does that include the eight hundred per month?
It includes the eight, I think, seven hundred.
No, I think, I think he allocated eight hundred a month.
Was it eight hundred? Okay, eight hundred a month.
So we have a motion.
Two hundred and some odd thousand dollars that was increased in the budget.
So we have a motion, and we have a second, is there any further discussion, question? Go ahead.
Was there somebody else? Go ahead. So how will this address what's been done previously with the health insurance that, that those individuals are receiving currently?
They have sixty days to find.
That's going forward, but, but what do we do financially since we've been providing them with insurance? Is there something that needs to be sorted out?
Well, what do you mean, what do you do financially, I'm not, because they've been paying their portion of the premium.
County provided a portion of the premium as well, right?
Yeah, you're gonna have to eat that.
Okay.
That is what it is, I mean.
And that'll come out of that budget already, so, and this eight hundred dollars is going forward, not going back to January first.
Right, because he, he has to amend the contracts, and going forward, he's gonna have to enter the contract.
Want to add, this is, this is all part of something that came out of the Supreme Court, where they're trying to equalize the pay for public defenders as they do with prosecutors, deputy prosecutors. So it's all an effort to try and even things out and make things a more even playing field, so public defenders aren't receiving less, and the perception isn't that you're getting better, hypothetically, I'm not saying this, but better quality prosecutors than you are public defenders.
Mr. President, to Mr. Movak, I agree with you, but the problem is there, there is no quick solution, they, they, no, no, I said they complicated the heck out of it, but they do. So they didn't, they didn't give us any, anything, any help at all.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, any other comments?
I'd like to thank Mr. DiMartino for the extensive work he did on this and the resolution, which makes sense to me.
Any other comments? Here we know the comments, all those in favor, please say aye. Any nays? Okay, just making sure. We're moving on to new business, and at this time, I realize that when we were talking in our workshop, and we could not make a motion of support for something, it is the council's pleasure, we did not put it in at the beginning of the meeting. Can we amend the agenda if we wish to make a motion of support at this time, as we go to new business, for three million dollars for the annex project? But I can't make that, I can't make that motion to, to change the agenda.
I'll make the motion, I'd like to make a motion for the council to approve not to exceed its emotional support, not to exceed three million dollars out of the emergency reserve fund for projects that we're going to pre-fund, that they're still being reviewed by the insurance company, but due to the timeframes, we need to get it moved.
Can we, can we make that emergency reserve and or our?
Correct.
Okay, now, do we need to amend the agenda to do it, or we can just do the support?
Move to amend the agenda. Yeah.
We're doing both at the same time.
Yeah, that's fine, I'm gonna add this item to the agenda.
Do I have a second? So we have a, a motion and a second, any further discussion? Not hearing any further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
So Ms. Grammarosa can now go ahead and move forward based on the information that we discussed at the workshop.
And then we need to agenda that for our next meeting?
Yes, we will appropriate, and we will put it on the agenda.
And hopefully we'll have some more answers by then.
Great, thank you.
And not more requests. Okay, moving on with new business. Number one, consider approval of council president's authorization to hire replacement positions for, we'll do these one at a time.
I was gonna say, it's a matter of time, because they're all, they're all, they're just replacing, I'd like to make a motion to approve A, B, and C.
Second, we have a motion and a second, any discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Okay, moving on to number two, Laporte County Small Animal Shelter requesting motion of support for truck repair, go ahead.
I'm here to represent the, uh, Laporte County Animal Shelter, he's not able to make it here tonight. The repair, the transmission for the truck is seventy-five hundred dollars, he's asking for a motion of support so that he can get that started. He does have money in the donation fund, if he has to, he'll use it, or, you know. He does have money in the donation fund, if he has to, he'll use it, or, you know, if we could cover it, that'd be great.
Is your motion support for the full amount?
Full amount.
We have a motion for seventy-five, a support for seventy-five hundred dollars. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second, any further discussion?
I read the, um, and I wanna thank him for, uh, giving us, uh, the, uh, estimate and all that, but he didn't have mileage on the truck and I just wondered, uh, evidently it must be in good condition.
I don't think, I don't think it's that old, yeah, I don't, yeah.
So, two thousand seventeen G M Sierra.
He stated it's very good condition.
Did, uh, you have any idea how many miles on it? No?
Okay, I can check.
Uh, doesn't matter.
We have a motion of support and we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, we, uh, now on number three, schedule a budget hearing, so this way we can start planning, uh, a little bit further on it. Um, the dates here that are suggested are Monday, the twenty-fourth, we have a meeting that evening, so we would end a little early or try and make sure that we have some dinner available. And then it would be Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, and a fall, and then an additional day, just in case we have any further, uh, need to go into the twenty-sixth. So, anybody like a motion of, uh?
I'm waiting, see if everybody can.
If you, yeah, everybody check their calendars, or if we need to hold this over one more month, I prefer not, but, um, if we have to, please say so.
I'm good with it.
Did you say start the twenty-fourth then?
Yes, the day of twenty-fourth.
That's the day of our council meeting.
Yes, okay, we're trying to, it's, it's, it's just timing for getting the.
Start at eight, eight-thirty or nine?
Nine.
I just, I can put, gotta put down a time, I'm good with it.
Really? That late?
Sorry.
Nine, so it's for nine AM, to be on, at nine AM, okay? Anybody else? Still checking? We don't know, or?
Tentatively right now, yeah.
Okay.
I have to check with work, I'm sorry.
No, tentatively now, yes.
Okay, and, and Mr. Cunningham?
Fine.
Thank you very much.
Like, make a motion of support pending their, that way they can at least get something tentatively on the schedule.
Second, what? When, when did we start, if I may, when did we start last year?
And time wise?
Nine o'clock, I think.
Nine?
Uh, we may have started a little earlier, but.
Okay, a lot of department heads, the vast majority say just give me the same time as last year. Uh, I'm not an early morning person, but, uh, but, uh, whatever the council's pleasure is, we'll, we'll go with.
Right now, we're. We have to start before ten, all right, Jim? I was suggesting eight. I see, I thought you wanted to go later.
I do have one question, I just, cause we, we run into this problem a lot of times with scheduling. Uh, even the budget committee, even if they wanted to talk about, I don't care who does it, but the schedule should be rearranged a little bit from la- last year, because every year we run the same problem, the same groups stay at the end and we need it at the beginning. So, it's all, you're.
Is that something you'd like to work on or make some suggestions on the schedule?
I'll work with somebody, if somebody wants to do it. Somebody wants to do it with me, that's fine.
Yeah, we. Or I, I, I'll be, I'll be happy if we need to.
I think we would also, in conjunction with that, is the department heads need to understand that you may be called, I mean, be ready, if you're in the late afternoon and we're moving folk fast, we might need to call you up and, and bring you in, so.
I think, I think you guys addressed one of the things that, I know that I've had a chance to talk to some of these council members about the amount of money that we have in the funds. And some of you guys, I, it was brought to my attention that somebody understand now that it's great if you guys wanna, we haven't cut the budget, cause that's the only way you're gonna increase for next year, I think, I talked, Mr. Novak.
In the general fund, yeah.
General fund.
Right.
Mm-hmm. So, and we have not.
Gonna increase the surplus.
We have not attacked that, that, that approach, especially with lit money being used, that the general fund has some other purposes. I'm just throwing it out there, so.
No, appreciate the comment, any other comments?
It seems to me that, uh, based on experience, that if the departments that are closest, for example, uh, nine-one-one and the sheriff and the auditor and things that can get here within just a minute's notice.
We should move them to the afternoon.
We should move them to the afternoon and, and let them fill gaps as they can, because that, otherwise we're not sitting around as much.
Great idea, thank you. Okay, well, uh, we have a motion and a second for those dates, so all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Okay, moving on to, um, number four, um, we found out late this afternoon that this cannot be done with, uh, just a requesting permission to spend. Uh, we need to make sure that we appropriate these funds, so there's a motion of support, uh, to, um, to, for the highway, um, everybody was given a list of the equipment and trucks, it's gonna be coming from their, um, their out. I thought we were taking.
It's coming out of, may I?
Yes, please.
So, e- every year in the highway department's budget, there's five million dollars from the lit that is put into their budget. That's where we're taking the funds from, so I believe this is a motion of, uh, permission to spend because it's already in their budget, uh, but it is out of that five million dollars that is allocated for highways every year in their department. Does that make sense?
Today it is, they would like to use LRS, but that needs to be publicized.
Then, then it's changed.
But today it is exactly what you said, though.
Right, right.
So we can authorize it out of this lit?
But he wants it out of something else.
But he needs it lit today and then he'll come back with LRS.
Okay, so, just a question. I guess maybe Mr. Stevenson is, why, we already have that five million dollars there and we're supposed to work on spending that down, would it be a better use later on for the LRS? Cause we had this discussion, go ahead, Mark.
I'm gonna back up just, cause there, we've had problems in the past, you don't spend the money, you don't get the money the next year, you have to be careful about this funding here and it's a, I know that we're, and we have a new administration, but there are, you know, needs to ask some questions about that, cause I know we ran into problems with this in the past.
Are we talking about LRS? Are we, are we talking about the, the, the money that?
Yes.
Five million dollars.
Five million dollars.
Last year, they only used three, three and change, right?
Correct.
The state, the state is not good about leaving those type of funds left over in fund, in, in those accounts.
This, this five million dollars that's allocated is actually in their budget, out of lit. And I, I agree with you a hundred percent, if, if whatever's left over, we need to make sure what's there, but.
Mr. President, Counsel, good evening. If we, if we take the not to exceed one point three million for the equipment out of lit, that's typically where our, our chip seal, stone, oil and our, our, uh, paving money comes from. So, we can take it out of there, uh, we've got a pretty aggressive chip seal program this year, uh, last year we did forty miles, thirty miles the year before, year before that we didn't do any, and the intention is to do two hundred this year. Uh, so, we're gonna need to come back at another meeting to, uh, I, I guess to get an appropriation out of, uh, LRS money, uh, for part of our stone purchase. So.
And just, just reference to the third year ago, because the only reason why we didn't go into, don't, is that we did extra paving that year. We spent a, we gave them additional, uh, two, two million dollars for additional road to be paved, cause we got a cheap rate that year on being able to blacktop over compared. Normally we'd like to do both, you know, chip with seal and blacktop, but I just made thirty, three years ago, I just wanna reference that, we did that on purpose. We spent more money in blacktopping that year.
Correct.
So, does it make a difference to you if this comes out of the lit that's in your budget or the?
I think it'll have to come out of lit tonight, correct?
You, it's the only way you're getting it tonight.
To transfer funds, basically, you're sure.
The problem I'm up against was the same thing with, uh, the, the truck orders, same thing EMS having with the ambulances is, is getting approval from, from you gentlemen, so that I can sign the, uh, order with the vendor to secure a, a spot, you know, we know how the supply chain is, is all messed up. And if I have to wait another month to put in an order for a grader, uh, a grader isn't something they just keep on the lot like, uh, a Buick, it's, uh, it's a pretty custom item, so uh, the longer it takes me to secure a build spot, you know, the, the longer delivery is gonna be.
So when it comes to LRS, ultimately, we are, you have a plan to where that's gonna be spent this year?
Correct.
Okay.
So, uh, then instead of the motion of support, would anybody like to make a motion?
Permission to spend. I'll make a motion, permission to spend one point three out of.
Not to exceed one point three?
Not to exceed one point three out of the lit that's in your budget.
Second.
We have a, a motion and a second, any further discussion?
And we understand that, right, right, I mean, right.
Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, thank you very much, I'm glad it's.
Thank you, see you guys next month.
So now we're gonna continue with appropriations, transfers and requests. La Porte County Drug Free Partnership requesting permission to spend from County Drug Free Community Fund eleven forty-eight for the distribution of funds collected between April first, twenty twenty-two and March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three in the amount of fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy cents. We have a lot of detail.
Motion to approve.
Packet of where it goes, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second, they come back every year for permission.
Any, any further conversation? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for coming up. Would you like to address us for a moment?
Just tell us about the grant you got, real quick.
Okay, uh, La Porte County was fortunate, we received a Department of Mental Health Addiction Community Catalyst Grant. It is to support mental health and substance use and relationships with law enforcement. A big piece of that grant is to reimburse multi-jurisdictional law enforcement agencies to be trained in an evidence-based program called Crisis Intervention Team. Um, to our county's credit, we are the only county in the entire state that has a multi-jurisdictional team. Um, we're only one of nineteen counties and La Porte County is being asked to present nationally on this particular program. Um, it brought money into the county, it reimburses, uh, jurisdictions, so.
Introduce yourself, take some credit here.
Wow, thank you, Mr. Cunningham, Mickey Webb, La Porte County Drug Free Partnership Program Director, thank you. And thank you for the approval.
Thank you.
See you next year.
Uh, La Porte County Adult Probation requesting permission to spend from probation use of fee account twenty-one oh two forty-one oh seven zero 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 three three four.
Motion to approve.
Purchase of new equipment, computers, laptop, printer, software and mi- mixer, seven thousand six hundred and thirty dollars. We have a motion, a motion to approve, any comment? Hearing no comment, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed, okay.
I'm good.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm good. I'm sorry, I just.
Okay, La Porte County Circuit Court requesting permission to spend from the alternative dis- dispute resolution A D R account two-five oh three, three oh one thirty-five dash zero 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 two seven three for a new laptop and software for one thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollars and two cents.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, and we have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
All those, any comment, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Thank you, moving on. La Porte County Community Corrections requesting permission to spend from County Corrections Fund, misdemeanor account eleven seventy-five point zero two oh four eight point zero 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 point zero five nine one for new washers and dryers in the amount of twelve thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty-three cents, I believe there's five each.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do I have a second? We have a second, any comment? We'd like you to just introduce yourself and then I'll call for the vote.
Okay, Marika Beatty, Director, La Porte County Community Corrections.
Thank you, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Thank you, we're moving forward.
Thank you.
Uh, La Porte County Coroner requesting permission to spend from Coroner Nom Reverting Fund two oh five three for hotel rooms for coroner's conference of a thousand, not to exceed a thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second, would you like to introduce yourself?
Lynn Swanson, La Porte County Coroner.
Thank you very much.
Real quick question, so is that government rate?
It is, it's a discounted rate, it will actually be less than that because I have the sales tax form that they accept.
You got that, okay, good, right, all right, that's it.
Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nays, thank you very much, moving forward. Uh, we move down to Redevelopment Commission requesting additional appropriation from L I T Economic Development eleven twelve or Riverboat eleven ninety-one or Wind Tax forty-two twenty or A R P eighty-nine fifty-one for K I P Rail Connectivity C S X Park Connection in the amount of five hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, this is also to be reimbursed over a three-year period with a guarantee of repayment.
And I believe you were here before us before.
Yes, this, uh, Mr. Council.
This is just for funding it.
So please just state your name and then I'll ask for a motion.
Matt Reardon, redevelopment.
Motion to support.
Motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve this time after he motioned for it.
Out of A R P.
Out of A R P.
Second with a question. With being as reimbursed, can we use it out of A R P?
Yes.
Okay.
Because the A R P is not the restricted one, so, because everything is, is.
Now, this is a loan, so it's gonna be repaid, correct?
Yes, sir.
And it'll go into general, good, that's what I'm gonna check.
Yeah, well, we're actually gonna be paid and it's gonna go in the general fund on the car usage. And then if it does, if it's not enough, then it'll be, um, it'll be.
Repaid by the two adjoining property.
Friday at our meeting.
The, the, by the two, uh, property owners in, in Kingsbury that have been signatory to an agreement to repay. Limborgan, uh, J B Seabrook.
Okay, any other comment? Hearing no comment, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Hearing none, moving forward, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if you'll indulge me for one second, I have a, another request that I would like to bring before this for, uh, consideration at your next meeting, has to do with our ability to deliver on the, uh, bridge project in Kingsbury. And, uh, what I would, uh, request support from the council, uh, to consider front funding that and then, uh, the, as the grant funds are drawn down on, that would be again paid back to the county. This is a decidedly quicker process, closer to three months, as opposed to a three-year time limit for the other one. Um, as, it's, the council is aware, uh, La Porte County was one of the, uh, few counties that did receive a ready grant in, uh, in the, of the seven counties of the Farms region, and this is, has to do with being with Kingsbury and the bridge project.
So, uh, not hearing anything before about this, we'll get a little bit more information and we will, the R D C is gonna talk about it on Wednesday.
Correct.
And then it'll be, uh, brought to us at our next meeting.
Sounds like you were seeking a motion of support, did you need that?
I, I, I would, because I, I, I guess the whole purpose of the request is to expedite our ability to complete the project, I, I would hate.
Motion to support.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any comment?
So, just on the conversation as Matt stated, the issue with the ready grant, and it's, it's great, appreciate the money, if the state's watching. Um, but I think it's like a hundred and twenty days for them to make payments on it and do things. And it's hard to do the project when it's that far out, so we're just gonna front the money, then we'll recoup the money, hopefully within a, a short period of time.
Yes, there's a, you know, there's a process, there's other entities involved, um, it's not a direct, uh, you know, selection and the contractor gets paid, uh, most governmental entities work a lot quicker, there's just different layers and we're certainly appreciative of the money, uh, but when you go out to purchase a bunch of materials, you're out a lot of money for a lot of days and, and, and that's, uh, can make things challenging for, you know, smaller to regional businesses, so, uh, that's the purpose.
This is the Tressel Bridge, right?
Yes, sir.
And I didn't hear, uh, estimate of the amount, or maybe I missed it.
Uh, for six hundred thousand dollars to start the funding?
Correct, that is, that, that's the total, six hundred and one thousand is the total amount of the ready grant received by the county. Um, but once we get through the first process again, uh, and this is new to the forum and it's new to Indiana, so there's a little bit of a, a, a learning curve going on with all this because of where the money came from. Uh, this is a little different than the other funding that the county received from the state, these are fed funds, they have different.
Mr. Monau, could you repeat the name of the bridge again? I, I failed to write it down.
He said it's Tressel Bridge, is all he said, thank you.
Over travestage.
Right.
Thank you.
It's replacing the old wooden one that's sitting there.
Yes, repair.
Repair, who said repair?
Better replace.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, any further discussion?[1694.07] Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Any nays? Hearing none. That motion carries.
I'll report back after the Redevelopment Commission next.
Thank you very much. Uh, La Porte County Auditor requesting additional appropriation from Lit Public Safety eleven-seventy for raises that were approved during budget hearings for poll positions, nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and five dollars and twenty-two cents. This represents the first quarter of pay that we had said that we were gonna pay for out of the lit.
Mr. President, um, I believe this is misworded. It shouldn't be an additional appropriation. It should be a transfer. We've collected the money in the lit since last October, correct? Appropriating any money. We're just transferring money from one account to another. We'll accomplish the same thing and I, secondly, I believe our attorney should probably prepare an ordinance prior to the next meeting so that we don't have to keep doing this. It just happens automatically.
Well, next year, a, a budget was not, uh, set for this year. A budget will be set for next year, so we will not have to do it automatically next year. Because there was no budget set for this year, we can come up with something next month that will say that we can.
Every quarter, every month, whatever. We just wanted to get a first start before we had that.
I agree.
That amount ready to go and we really appreciate your, your consistency on, on trying to get that answer.
Mr. Cunningham, I think that because this money was not budgeted. Because we didn't get it, that even though it's not an appropriation, it is an appropriation.
Do we have the money?
We have the money.
So we're transferring it from the lit's public safety account to the general fund to pay salaries, correct?
Yeah, I don't believe that. Surely we can transfer to the general. It's, it's, it's restricted uses. It, those, those, it'll be paid from the fund, won't it? It's like A R P, uh.
I, yeah, I think, I think Mr. Stables is correct.
They've been paid.
I, I know that we, we.
We're gonna make up for the difference.
We're perceiving this as a, we're paying back the general fund because.
No, what we're, what we're doing is we're, we, we paid them year-to-date from, from, from the general.
And now we're gonna pay this out of here.
So they'll.
So that will even out eventually.
Just taking between two pots where the total in the end will be what it was supposed to be.
So instead of coming out of the general fund and here, that until we use up the nine thirty-three, it'll be coming directly.
How, how about we get the motion, Mr. Cunningham, appropriate and or transfer, whichever is more appropriate? And that way you're covered because we know what we're trying to do.
I don't think there's any doubt what we're doing and, and I think Mr. Stables just hit the nail on the head. We've already paid for these public safety lit raises since January. And now we're just refurbishing the fund with the money that we collected in the public safety.
But that's, that's not what.
The purpose of that fund.
That's not what Tim is saying.
The state of Indiana considers an appropriation the legal basis that you, you, the council's acting to authorize the spend. I.
So, so just for clarification, are you, we've already paid obviously these portions out of the general. Are you saying that this nine thirty-three is for here going forward to take us?
To get us even, even up?
One quarter, right?
Another quarter? So that takes us through the half year? Is it reimbursing us?
We didn't do anything last month, so I'm trying to think if we done anything year-to-date. Did we do anything?
So we're starting now.
Haven't appropriated anything. The department heads are paying out of that, out of their funds this difference so far.
The general, right?
So then the money has to go into the general to replenish those funds when they're gonna come short, is that?
Or we're gonna pay them instead of splitting it between the general and the public safety lit. We're just gonna pay out of public safety lit till we utilize these funds and equal ourselves out for the first quarter and then we're gonna, next month, fix it so we don't have to do this anymore for the rest of the year.
Mr. Keeler, I'm glad to. Transparency plan.
It's confusing. Um, in the future.
Here it goes.
In the future, this would be done as like a blend, right? So we would be paying, every single paycheck would be getting a portion from public safety lit and a portion from general. Is that how that would work going forward? If this were appropriated in the budgeting process?
Right, come next year.
For next year when we budget it.
Is that not what you're gonna do with this?
He's gonna pay more than the twenty-five percent.
We gotta pay more than the twenty-five percent to make up.
Make up for the twenty-five that we haven't paid yet.
Right. So we'll see again, you're, this will be on here again in another quarter.
Mr. President, probably made his motion. I, I'm gonna go by motion that, uh. Motion to either transfer and or.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Any nays? Hearing none, we move forward.
Can I just ask, Rhonda, could you prepare like a spreadsheet or something on that just so that we can see?
Also, as a, as an additional follow-up, could you check with State Board of Accounts or D L G F, whoever's the right person, uh, to find out, is this an additional appropriation or a transfer so that we were informed for going forward?
They did say it had to be an additional appropriation until it's budgeted.
Generally, you're gonna find out that they're pretty much gonna agree with you unless.
And we can't, we can't budget mid-year?
They said since it wasn't already done, we have to do additional appropriations this year, but we can budget for next year.
Yeah, we, we, we tried that avenue. Trust me, I wanted to get it done.
I did follow up.
But we'll do in our next appropriation, we'll do where it'll be spread out for the rest of the year. Uh, moving forward to La Porte County Sheriff's Department requesting additional appropriation from Lit Public Safety or Riverboat or Wind Tax or A R P for Sheriff's Merit Overtime, sixty thousand dollars. And in front of us, who do we have?
Uh, good evening, Sheriff Ron Heig back here a second time this evening for you guys. I had sent you guys an email, um, last week, a week ago today, uh, expressing the need for this. It is, uh, a lot earlier than we normally come back and ask you for overtime. But the difference or the, uh, the culprit is, is that we just been short on manpower issues. Uh, if you recall, last year, we didn't have to come back at all because we were able to transfer the unused salaries. We spent about a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars for overtime last year. Uh, at that pace, we're on about that pace again this year. The good news is, is that there is light at the end of the tunnel. Uh, we're only short down one officer right now. We've had several that have just come off of F T O. We've got several more that are getting ready to come off of F T O either the end of this month, the first of next month. We've got three that are getting ready to start the academy next week. Uh, so there's some light at the end of the tunnel and some of the costs, uh, the burden of overtime cost should start slowing down, uh, as we proceed through the summer.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve out of Public Safety Lit eleven-seventy.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? We know there's plenty of money in that account for this because we didn't ask for more money before the nine hundred and thirty-three. So there is, um, definitely money there. So we have a first and a second. No other further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. Any nays? Okay, motion carries. Moving on to the, La Porte County Sheriff's Department again, requesting additional appropriation from opioid restricted funds twelve-thirty-seven for true narc drug test equipment in the amount of thirty-six thousand and four dollars. Now, this account had to be set up and there is two restricted and non-restricted. Obviously, if you can get it and use it out of restricted, we're going there first. That's why we didn't list both. And this is our first, um, usage of these funds. Uh, we've learned that this is going to, we're gonna be given money over eighteen years. And so we are going to start trying to see what else we can plan for, uh, over that period of time. Um, I made the mistake of first going to the Health Department and really these funds are meant for the courts and for the Sheriff's Department. And so this is what we're now learning as we have more information.
For the coroner.
And, okay, yes. So thank you for adding that as well.
You got a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second.
Seconds, third.
And, uh, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
I just, go ahead. Go ahead.
No, no.
I'll stay, I'll make my statement afterwards.
Okay.
It has nothing to do with.
All the, all those in favor, please say aye. Nay? Hearing none?
Mr. Novak.
I just wanna, uh, say to Rhonda, thank you for the, the information that you sent on this because she sent us the state statute and everything and, uh, it was, it was very informative and I, I, I appreciate that because this is one of those that, uh, is brand new. It's the first money that's being spent out of that, so.
We just, uh, was, I think it was the first of this year. We were notified that we were receiving this money and which we got it, so you, you're correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to, uh, La Porte County Commissions requesting additional appropriation from Lit Public Safety or Riverboat or Wind Tax or A R P for sirens, seventy-two thousand dollars, not to, no, it says just seventy-two thousand dollars.
With the information we see from Rob today, I would like to make a motion to support out of Public Safety Lit.
I'll second that.
It's not a, a motion.
Motion to support. Disappropriation.
There is no, there's no need to support. It's just a.
It's an additional appropriation. What did I say?
You said support.
Well, I'm supporting it.
Okay, thank you.
With my motion to approve the appropriation.
Okay, we're having fun today. Somewhere. Okay, now, uh, we have a motion and a second. Uh, is there something you'd like to add? Uh, and we have three people there.
Okay, so this is for, this is for, what are you approving for? Because I know he came up earlier and he talked about us moving one of.
Uh, no, that was, that was just information we received today that has got nothing to do with this. This has only got to do with what you had brought forward to us.
Okay, so this is for us to go ahead, go forward and then.
Get into a report on everything that's out there and analyze and everything, yeah.
Mr. President, I have a quick, quick question here just for.
Yes.
Thought for the board. Depending on, uh, to replace sirens, it's gonna be about forty-two, forty-three thousand dollars per, including poles installation, looks like everything else. Um, right now, currently got five that are down. Um, you know, it's gonna be about a quarter million dollars to get those five replaced. We know those are down right now. I don't, since, since we passed this, you know, there's been a little bit of a shift per se, let's say in the, uh, landscape. Uh, just for consideration for the board, if the funds aren't going to be available, if, um, moving forward, let's say this year, because there are a lot of sirens that are in disrepair right now, but they are in one capacity and they're functional. The five that are down, if there's, if you're looking out at the horizon and there's only gonna be about a quarter million dollars to spend this year, I would suggest, you know, it, given the shift in the landscape, some of the different things that have changed, we address those five since we know they're broken right now and not working. Uh, before maybe if the funds aren't gonna be there to do anything else this year, then we do the study next year because obviously things are gonna change, more things are gonna break before next year. I just don't know how much money the council is gonna have available to appropriate. So consideration would be, doing the study now, as things have shifted, may not be the best plan if the money isn't gonna be there to support it, if that makes sense. So my thought would be, again, if you're only gonna have about a quarter million dollars in the pot to put toward this project, we just put it toward the five that we know are broken now.
But, but we don't know that those five need to be replaced a hundred percent. That they just need some upgrades or something, so I think we need to analyze all of them, get a report and then we'll decide how much we're gonna replace and what needs to be replaced, a plan on everything in one.
Gonna analyze, we need to analyze what percentage of the population relies on sirens when they get a message directly to their phone in the first place.
I'm also wondering, could someone explain, this is a seventy-two thousand, six hundred dollar contract for someone to be here for four weeks to look at only fifty-two sirens? That's like two sirens a day.
So that's, that's our total and it's throughout the entire county.
Yep, but there's fifty-two sirens in the whole county.
Right. So then what's hap, we're gonna anal, what the plan was and as you see these maps and if anyone would like to come in and look at the maps, we actually have some sirens that are overlapping other sirens. So we might have some areas that are covered by three different sirens. And so unless we know which ones of those sirens actually work and are efficient and some of them have a larger range than others, once we have, we can analyze what each siren can do and what the capacity is. Then we would have to come back and we've talked about this, me and Rob have, have worked on a, we would have to analyze what areas would cover the most population and be able to take those sirens and move them around so that we're spread out and we're actually hitting areas that would have a larger population. When you look at Fish Lake, me and Highway Director went down there. We were looking at a piece of property. We were right by the lake. We had cell phones and we were lost. And we were trying to figure out how to get out of that area and find an area that we were supposed to be in. And the reality was, our phones were not working. So when we don't have good coverage by phones, we have an obligation to those areas to make sure that we have some kind of a system in place that will alert them. Having the cell phone is great, but we have to be realistic. There are some areas that do not have coverage.
There are some areas that don't have coverage of the, from the sirens today as well, correct?
Right. So this would give us the ability, so this is, what we're trying to do is figure out what we have, what we actually own and what we have, what condition they're in and then try to find a better location for them where they will be of better service.
And then, and then we can make a logical determination as to exactly what we do with them. Sorry.
Mr. Yagelski, please.
So, I, I don't disagree. I think there's a combination of, I, I like that we're just gonna look at study. That's a great idea, but some like these, uh, gentleman on the left and gentleman on the right are also expressed. It, let, let's just say that the phone is a viable thing. May, may be viable everywhere, so you can always, if you have the study, you're gonna be able to find out what, what you need to purpose of. But I like to look at, I like to do a co, combination with their, with their thing and also, cause, um, I, I don't think anybody understands, these were never supposed to been the county councils. The reason why they're all ha, they where they are is the township paid for their own. They installed them wherever they wanted to. They put, you know, it was a hit. Wherever, you know, we went to the Westville one, which was, which was a total disaster, but we had to move on after two years of. But it was, and, because they sold it on their own, said, okay, now it's your responsibility. No, it was your responsibility. Uh, now, now I see Long Beach wants to move theirs and now it's not supposed to be ours, it's supposed to be Long Beach's. So that we, that was never intended for the county council to, to do this stuff. It was supposed to be done by the, by the actual, um, areas we talked about. So I'd like to see maybe a combination. If we look at this, if you, gentlemen, what we could do with the devices that are out there along with what you, what you're saying, if there's, if there are bad coverage areas.
And what Mr. Yagelski held up, this is a weather radio. This is what I have in my house. I hadn't hold, hold it up yet. So this is, uh, this works sort of if you're in an area where there isn't a siren. I bought this thirty-five bucks on Amazon. Um, much louder than a siren because it's in your actual house. Uh, it would wake you up at night as opposed to a siren that might not necessarily. But my bigger objection to this is, is a thousand, four hundred dollars per siren just to study them. When we know some of these are working, seems like a lot of money. So my question is, do we competitively procure this or did we go straight to one vendor, Marcus Electric and ask them for a single price?
So Marcus Electric has nothing to do with this. This is actually American Signal, wait.
Marcus Electric's across the top.
So what would be the difference if I had American Signal across the top? And they are the ones that we actually buy the, the system from and that's their preferred vendor. So is the problem because Marcus Electric is American Signal's preferred vendor? Or is the problem because you just don't like?
The problem is when the public believes that we are picking favored vendors and we're not being competitive about our processes, they lose faith in our ability to do our job.
Right.
So, do we competitively procure this?
So again, American Signal is the company that sells us the product. They actually use Marcus Electric to go ahead and install them and test them and do all the electrical on it. So is the problem? Do you want me to go back to American Signal and tell them that they have to use a different electrician in order for them to sell us the product?
A portion of this bill is for the electrician and a portion is for American Signal. It's a combination. So the total, no one vendor's getting the seventy-two thousand dollars. American Signal sells the product. They don't install it. They don't do anything else. They're the ones that check it out to make sure everything's good. They cannot do that. They're gonna send a guy up here. They cannot do that by themselves. That's why they have to have somebody go with it. If you wanna say seventy-two, they gotta find a different electrician. Say they gotta find a different.
And then we'll, we'll go back to them and we'll tell them to get a different electrician.
I think the price seems high. I, I'd like to see more, uh, estimates on this.
The, the problem is who else other than Allied Signal can do this?
Nobody.
I, I'm very concerned about Allied Signals. Well, I'm sorry, American. Sorry, thank you for.
There another vendor besides American Signal?
We do have, there is another vendor, but we do not have their sirens. It's Federal Signal. Um, so.
They're gonna, yeah.
So, uh, they're not gonna work on American Signals.
Do we need the, do we need American Signal to look at these sirens or can they be evaluated by other professionals?
Well, I, I, I tried to find another vendor. Um, I think, I, I think that, uh, Porter County uses American Signal for their sirens, but I don't know who, who they have that does the work on them. Uh, when I contacted American Signal, they, because I asked him actually to, if we could get the, um, uh, technician to come out and look at them, how much it would cost. Um, they in turn called Marcus Electric and so that's where, how Marcus Electric got involved in it. That's who they used to do.
So you didn't contact them. You didn't contact them to contact.
I did not contact Marcus Electric. I contacted American Signal. They contacted Marcus Electric. That's how, so.
Okay, now I have a question for you. I, I believe we received this report from you earlier today. And under this one, it says model, it says federal two-oh-oh-one. Now, is that allies?
No, what, what happened was.
Let me sure I understand what I got.
Several years ago, I, of course, this is long before I was here, but several years ago, they, they did an upgrade and, uh, apparently they bid it out. And so what happened was American Signal got the low bid. They went in and replaced all the electronics from Federal Signal and left the federal siren head. So actually there's a, most of the sirens are federal sire, the actual siren.
Siren is federal.
Electronics are American Signal, so.
That helps me understand that better. You also color coordinated this so that you knew that we had good signals from most of them. And, but you also had on there where we were getting no signal and why can't we just, uh, if we know that we're getting good signal, I mean, that should be a quick inspection where the others that were getting nothing should not, I mean, I, I, my problem is four weeks at that rate. And, and I'm telling you, when you think about the number that you can go visit and I know that we're a big county, but we're not the state.
Well, there, I mean, this is what I was told that they can only do two a day because they have to. Well, there, I mean, this is what I was told that they can only do two a day cuz they have to go out, and what they're gonna do is go through all the siren, the actual siren head, cuz some of the the siren heads are belt driven and those don't, I guess, they're obsolete and they can't repair them anymore. And we've got a couple that won't spin anymore, so I'm I I'm assuming that's what they are. So they have to ta- get up there and tear tear them apart. So and then they go through everything and, I mean, that's what I'm being told. It's it's gonna take two, they can only do two a day, so.
I mean, if you guys would like to make a form a committee and um, you know, two or three of you from the council come and join us, and then we can go through the maps and we can figure this out. Because again, me and uh Mr. Sabey has spent a lot of hours doing this, pulling the maps together and figuring things out, kinda coming up with other ideas where we can spread them out, trying to map um areas that we know that cell phones don't work. Your idea of the radio, I mean, would that be something that we would give them, people a stipend, or are you looking to just tell folks out there, well, we're not gonna
I think it's really scary.
Sirens, and then it's it's every resident for themselves to go out and buy a radio.
Or the county could subsidize them, which some counties give them out. Um, I I'm also noticing this study doesn't talk about uh, trying to figure out where the proper placements of these are. It just talks about studying the condition.
Well.
So that's this whole separate thing independent of the study.
Yeah.
But I like your idea of creating a committee, so motion to move it to committee.
I think there's already a motion, so we gotta gotta dispose of the first one first.
Motion to amend the first motion to solely be moved to committee.
Who made the first motion?
I did.
Okay, you did, and you're gonna, what would you like to do with that?
Well, there's a motion to amend on the floor. Someone needs to second the motion to amend, and then that amends the original motion.
My comment is that I don't think there's a perfect answer for alerting the public for emergencies and storms. Some people rely on these sirens. Some people wait for that. They listen to that siren. They need it. We're coming into the storm season. I'm all for getting a study because I think the uh rave system on your phone works great for those people to use it. I think the radio works great for people. I use it in my house because I don't have a siren near my house. Uh, and I use the the other thing. I think it's great. But this council and the county needs to make a determination. We're either gonna scrap all the sirens and walk away from it, or we're going to maintain what we have, especially in the high-density areas, to to alert the people that need it. Cuz we're coming into storm season. I for one, not gonna be the one.
No matter what we do, we're not gonna have sirens fixed through this study by storm season. That's not gonna happen.
Especially if we're delaying it another month, two months.
Sure, but we should be conscientious about how we spend money.
You're right.
If if you're someone who who does not hear the siren when it happens on siren testing, which is the first Saturday of the month at eleven o'clock.
Yes.
Then you should be thinking about making sure you have signed up for rave, or if you have a, think about getting a weather radio. Uh, think about alternative methods in the meantime while they work on getting fixed.
So.
But I think a committee is best uh best route to make sure we study this appropriately.
Uh, and once you understand too that the sirens are an outdoor warning system. So if you happen to be lucky enough to live close to one that you can hear it in your house, that's good, but they are an outdoor warning system. You know, we have weather radios. That's another way of getting alert. We have cell phones, you know, with the new technology. That's another way of getting alert.
But just like at Fish Lake when people are out on the lake, at the fairgrounds, there's one at the fairgrounds. If there's a fair or something going on. Michigan City down there, if there's a boat race that goes off down there. I mean, I I don't think scrapping the whole system. I'm all for looking at better sites, but.
You sound like you wanna be on a committee.
And also, I I just.
Needs to be done.
With our rave system, which is actually Smart nine-one-one is the public side of it. Anybody can sign up to that. They can go to the um and and download the app and put it on your cell phone, and you get all the weather alerts. It's not just a tornado warning.
How many people are signed up for that?
Uh, we don't have um access to that because it there's a lot of private um information that's on there, so they don't, we don't know exactly how many are signed up on that.
They can't just give you a number?
It's it's all private because there's there's a lot of, you can put, when you'd sign up on your um Smart nine-one-one, you can put a lot of um personal information as far as like medical stuff, so they don't, that we don't have.
Looking for a number. Twenty-five, you know, you think, I don't need, we don't need a printout.
I why, I I I can try to look it up, but I but I know it's it's.
Mr. Sabey, rave is only a portion of this, though. People can sign up for rave, but people can also get alerts pushed to their phone, and they, that just happens by default, is my understanding.
The rave system, the rave is actually the vendor. They're the 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 ones, it's the um computer program. And then the Smart nine-one-one tags along on the backside of that. So the rave system's for, basically for the government, for all us people, we can sign up for that. And then the Smart nine-one-one, you can still sign up. It gets the same alerts, but it actually, that goes through the whole. Anywhere in the county that has the um Smart nine-one-one, you'll get an alert for like, say you're in Illinois and there's a bridge out or something, you drive into that area, it's, your phone's gonna light up and say, you know, there's a bridge out. And I I know if you go into Porter County and Lake County, they both use it, and they use it for their road closure. So if you go over there almost every day during the week, you your phone's gonna light up and tell you that there's a road closed. But anyway, um, so that information is there also, so you can sign up and get weather alerts, road closings, that kind of thing on your Smart nine-one-one. Um, when the weather service puts out an alert, that comes through the um, it it's through the national um alerting system. It's called OIA. And um, that automatically goes to your phone. You don't even have to be signed up for anything. So when that tornado warning went out on the thirty-first, um, anybody had a cell phone, and if they have their alerts turned on, they're gonna get that tornado warning alert that's in that area. So Michigan City, they probably didn't get the tornado warning because that was not part of the area. Now, if the whole county was under it, they're gonna get it. But when that, they actually spotted a tornado and they put out a um no, it it was a geoscape. You know, they draw a map. The people that are in that map are gonna get that warning. So it's just kinda like a Amber Alert. Any anybody that has a their cell phone, if they have the alerts on, uh, if they'll get an AM delivered, so.
Yeah, it doesn't matter what state you're in.
Right.
So I'll withdraw my motion.
Same same thing with the with your with the weather warning. It doesn't matter where you're at. If you got a cell phone, you're gonna get that, so.
Got it.
So your motion's now withdrawn. So what's on the floor?
There was a motion to amend, so in that case, I'll just make a motion to move this to committee.
We have a motion on the floor to move this to committee and a second.
Can I ask for a timeframe on that?
Soon this week and meet, next week, week after.
I just.
Alright, cool.
Are we, are we looking to have something for our next meeting?
Yeah, before the next meeting.
For the next meeting. Okay, and first, let's get this um a vote, and then let's find the volunteers for this committee. So uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any nays?
Nay.
Nay.
One, we have two nays, okay? If we need to do a roll call, do it. If you got it, we're good. Um, now, just go back. Who would like to be on that committee? We, I know that you've mentioned.
Can't be this passionate without volunteering for the committee, so I volunteer.
Is there anybody else? I'll help out.
I'll work with them.
Well, we've got a couple more, so we've got Miss, Mr. Karanka and Mr. Novak. So there you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the time that you guys have put into this so far.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have any council comments?
Officially mean.
That's what this, those will. Okay, uh, council and attorney comments. Mr. Cunningham.
None due to the latest.
Mr. Yagowski.
None, thank you.
Mr. Keel.
None for me.
Mr. Novak.
I just wanna say, uh, please keep uh treasurer Joey Wensky, her husband Steve, and your thoughts and prayers. They're going through a very tough time right now. And I'd also like to acknowledge Jack Arnett and his son Derek Arnett. Uh, Jack Arnett for forty-two years of being involved with Pop Warner. He was just inducted into the Hall of Fame and his son for the outstanding job that they do with Pop Warner in this area. Thank you.
Mr. Karanka, can you?
I can't follow anything with that.
Mr. Mullenhauer, can you top that?
No.
And I'm certainly not gonna try to top that. Mr. Attorney, do you have any?
I'm done.
Okay, I need a motion too.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for a pleasant evening. So.